Okay, this is Luke Maruziak, Chair of Snoqualmie Planning Commission, calling the meeting to order at seven thirty-one P M. First, we do the roll call. Vice Chair Tesman.
Present.
Commissioner Alef.
Present.
Commissioner Lambert. Commissioner Mather. And Commissioner Smith, I know, is excused. And we have our new planning commissioner. Michael, what's his last name?
Crone.
Michael Crone.
Present.
Yeah, I know Commissioner Smith had mentioned that his son is at playoffs with Little League Baseball, I believe Little League Baseball, so he's out today, but he'll be back after today. Did you get any other? And did you get any other messages from commissioners?
No. Oh, actually, I did. It was Niraj, wasn't it? Niraj?
Oh, Commissioner Mather? Well, you're right. You're right. You said Commissioner Mather. Okay. Do you have the number for Commissioner Lambert?
Yes, I believe I do.
Yeah, I couldn't find it in my contacts. It might be buried in my. Can you see if you can dig it up?
Sure.
I would like to call him. All right, so. Now entertain a motion to excuse Commissioner Smith and Mather for excused absences. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go over the Chair. Will we please go over the attendance one more time since the meeting just started to record?
Okay, okay. So we have present Vice Chair Tesman, Commissioner Alef, myself, Chair Luke Maruziak, and Commissioner Michael Crone. And we've excused Commissioner Smith and Mather. And I want to give Commissioner Lambert a little bit of time because, no, he's local to see if he could show up. I do want to proceed with the meeting. So at this point, I move that we approve the agenda as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda? See on the participants. Any attendees other than panelists? Okay, hearing none. No public comments. Move on to the next item of the agenda, which is the Council Liaison Report.
Greetings, Commissioners, Councilmember Johnson. I have three items for you. The first is good news. The Riverview Park Playground has finally been reconstructed and is open to the public. And it's really awesome. If you have kids, I do strongly recommend that you drop by. It's train themed and the kids absolutely love it. It's great for all ages. It has a really nice, soft but sturdy substrate below it that the council has, I think, and the administration have decided to adopt moving forward for most of our playgrounds. Because even though it's more expensive upfront, it does save us money in the long run because you don't have to fluff up all the the wood chips and bark and stuff like that and replace it all the time. So anyway, it's a really nice substrate that we'll be using moving forward. Let's see, what else? Oh, the Transportation Commission has sent out a request for public comment. The story behind this is that the city council recently adopted a position requesting the city administration to request a jurisdiction transfer of Snoqualmie Parkway from the city to the state. So it would be an extension of Route eighteen rather than being a city street. And it would connect eighteen all the way to two oh two. The reason for this is because that roadway gets really beat up by a lot of the traffic, which is mostly, at least as far as the damage done, is not from local traffic, cars and pickup trucks and stuff like that, but from really large semi trucks that are carrying industrial materials, raw materials, et cetera, from places that are to our, mostly to our northeast slightly, to just other places wherever. And those are just really tearing up that road. And the way that the road is being used is as if it were an extension of Route eighteen anyway. So we think that the state should, once we do the repairs that we have committed to over the next few years, that the state would take over the maintenance of that street moving forward, and that could save our citizens a great deal of money in the range of millions plus. So we do strongly encourage that, or at least I do. I shouldn't speak for the council as a whole. There is a thirty day comment period that's open until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Please send comments to T R A N S C at W S T C dot wad dot gov with the subject line, quote unquote, comments on Snoqualmie R G T for route jurisdiction transfer.
Can we put that in the minutes?
I think.
Yeah.
And let's see. And then the other thing is, I didn't quite have time to grab the details on how exactly to join, so I might just lean on Community Development Director Artetia here. The Affordable Housing Consortium, I believe, has a meeting this coming Wednesday. And our Community Development Direct, I believe, will be speaking. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So do you have the meeting details handy?
Yes.
I didn't. I didn't happen to write them down.
So it is a housing chat. It's titled surplus land for affordable housing at Umpqua Bank, room one forty seven, one four six West Second Street in North Bend. There is a Zoom link also available. If, and you can register in advance by I'd have to share the link somehow. I'm not sure how I'd share the Zoom link.
Yeah. Do you know if it's on the city calendar?
No, it is not on the city calendar. It is not officially a city sponsored event.
Makes sense. So, okay. But anyway, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we highlighted that as well.
What time does it start?
It starts at noon.
Okay.
I'd be happy to share the link with the planning commissioners.
I think we should, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe. Okay.
Excellent. So that's what I had for you folks today, but I'd be happy to stick around for questions.
Just one question. Is there any downside to the state taking over the Parkway? I mean, why would, why would anybody oppose that?
There could be an argument that we would lose some control over how that roadway works. So if we wanted to, let's say, change how one of the intersections operates, then we would have to get state approval to move forward with that, which could be a lengthy process, whereas if we kept it in-house, then we could do those ourselves. Let's see. I think that's kind of the biggest one. There's little maintenance things like, you know, clearing up potholes and stuff, but that shouldn't be too big of an issue to overcome. You know, if we just send a message to the state, say, hey, there's pothole, but we're good to take care of that. Because it's better for us to just do it right away, even on our own dollar, to take care of something small like a pothole than to wait for the state to get to it. So that shouldn't really cause delays for those minor kinds of maintenance.
Well, I know that the use of it, like Mount Sinai seniors do a parade every graduation, I think, because one either this week or next week. There's no problems using the road like we normally use it, right?
Not that I know of.
No, wouldn't think so. Okay. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes included in the packet that were dated April fourth as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ask that we vote to approve it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Those minutes are approved. Then we move into the second agenda item, the legislative policy item accessory dwelling units. While you do that, I'm going to fix Commissioner Lambert.
Hello. Hello. I'm Jonathan Kessler, I'm a new senior planner with City of Snoqualmie. Started two months ago tomorrow, so this is my first meeting with the commission. Glad to be here. And we are talking about accessory dwelling units. There's some information in your packets that you have had a chance to look at.
Essentially, accessory dwelling units, probably familiar with, small housing units attached to or separate from the primary dwelling unit on a property. And this year, the state legislature, when they passed several bills regarding housing, one of them that certainly impacts the city of Snoqualmie is one on accessory dwelling units in regard to the number that can be permitted on one parcel. So
Can you zoom that in just maybe a click? Yeah, that's better. That's way better. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay. And so that was a bill thirteen thirty-seven just passed by our support, the legislature side by the governor. And basically, it will restrict jurisdictions ability to act right regulations and give it construction ADUs, including those who may impact these occupancy requirements, lot size restrictions, lot size, and so we look at the code, there are several things in it, which I'm outlining in the the attachment that you have on item two, crosshatch, which is referred to. Looking at each section of the code that potentially conflicts with the state law that will go into effect July. Now, there's provision in the law that gives time to give this done. So essentially, six months after the adoption of comprehensive update. But the community development committee requires you to go ahead and do that. So that's what it's all going to bring forward to just for our discussion this evening. Then we can do
Bring it back with draft changes. You know, underlines strikeouts from the code and an agenda bill, tentatively mid-July. So we're looking around seventeenth of July. If you want to look at the crosswalk, it does cite the different parts of our code that do conflict with state law. The primary thing is we can't put design requirements on it that are stricter than what's on the housing of the primary dwelling unit. And probably the most important part is it will allow two accessory dwelling units per lot as opposed to the current one, which incidentally, many jurisdictions in the state have that rule that will be going away, where they limited ADUs to just one with some other requirements such as owner occupancy of the primary dwelling unit, which would no longer be required either. So that is the main headline with that would be allowing two, of course, with our Snoqualmie Ridge one and two up on the ridge and with the impact of the flood zone downtown. The overall impact, I think, of the change to state law, this is going to be very large because you do have to have space extra to put the second ADU. And a lot of people aren't even doing a first ADU yet. But, but it will allow that. So happy to look at any of these sections if you care to and go over them one by one, or if you'd like to just review them and if you have a question. I'll entertain questions.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
On its page two, it's S M C seventeen point five five dash zero seven zero F. You say accessory dwelling units shall not be larger than ten percent of the lot area or six hundred square feet is the existing code, and you're going to now say city or county may not establish a maximum gross floor area requirement for accessory that is less than a thousand square feet.
Right. So there's some size limitations on that as well. So primary focus of that, I believe, would be on livability of the unit that would be a little bit larger for different types of family units. And of course, having the two maximum possible.
All right. It sounded like the existing code wanted to prevent a lot being completely overwhelmed. I mean, we're not, we're not established maximum gross floor area requirement which is that there's less than a thousand square feet. I'm curious why a thousand square feet? You know, like tiny homes and stuff like eight hundred square feet and in couldn't you put, you know, put them side by side and stuff?
I don't know the intent upon the legislation. I mean, we could look into that certainly, but it's definitely a lot more flexibility, like I said, with, you know, perhaps larger family units or, you know, living arrangements. Without six hundred, it's pretty small. I know different cities, jurisdictions around the state have varying degrees of a lot of times it's percentages. Some say thirty-three. I know I came from Kent, I worked there, and they were thirty-three percent or eight hundred square feet. And there's
Okay.
And there's this going away. So pardon me.
Let me see what I've got in mind, because I think this wants to enable it, but I'm not sure. The one you just covered says that it's no longer for a single ADU, but at least two. That means it could be more than two, right?
No, that's the maximum. It would be two. Yes.
That's not, it says the city must allow at least two accessory. So it could be more than two.
I think that might just been a miswording, because it's, it's two, excuse me, two for our population. So this is the only bill that passed that directly in dealing with ADUs affects cities under twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, could you clarify? Because I think they would write it as one or two rather than at least two, because at least two tells me. Anyway, the thought I was trying to get to, as I never looked at the question, was if somebody had a vacant lot and they wanted to just put six tiny houses in it in a dense area that they could, but you're saying it's limited to two.
Right. And the definition of accessory dwelling unit is that it's secondary to a primary house on the parcel. So you have to have, you know, you have to have the main house to allow the accessory dwelling unit. So the idea of like a vacant lot and doing that would not, would not be allowed, at least not under this section of the code.
Right. Could you check if you could put more than, so basically, the other main house, you put a single ADU on there?
Pardon me?
So you put a single ADU on there? Or two?
Or two.
In addition.
So you would have the primary dwelling unit, and then you could put up to two accessory dwelling units.
Okay, okay. I misunderstood that. So you've got
That are accessory to the primary.
Okay. So you could have a primary and two in every law.
Correct.
And that's what it is.
Correct.
Okay. With lot size, that's probably, there's probably much you can squeeze on there anyway.
And that's the thing, because, you know, we have, you know, site coverage, we have impervious surface issues. So, you know, in lot sizes is key there, you know, like up on the ridge, you have the smaller lots and they're full of a house. I mean, you know, the house covers a large part of a particular lot. But that doesn't leave much room for an ADU unless it's within the house, you know, because we have detached and we have attached there like internal to the house, maybe on like a basement floor.
And one other question, again, not to get totally red hot, so somebody could easily do this if you could convert a garage to an ADU, some of which might be big enough. Is that thought of in here?
That it is. Yes, it's on the matrix. If you look on page. I was just looking at that. The last page. ADUs may be constructed in either an existing or new single-family residence, including garages, and it does say for the the new law, a city or county must allow accessory dwelling units to be converted from existing structures, including but not limited to detached garages. So that is an element that's permitted.
And that I could see. Somebody could convert the garage correct, and add a, like a tiny house or whatever in whatever space they have in somewhere where there's a sizable lot. And that would be the one plus two, and that's what it allows.
Okay. Right. And in theory, someone could have a detached garage and could have convert like above the garage into an ADU and then build another ADU as a separate structure. And it would be permissible, but no more than that.
Right.
As it's written.
It could even be an attic, though, couldn't it?
Well, I mean, that's would be under the building code, you know, as far as like what it's called. I mean, it has to meet certain standards to be a dwelling, dwelling unit for the building code.
Okay. It could be less than a thousand square feet.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So Chair Maruziak, I just, one little piece of information on the thousand square feet, many codes, many development codes around this area had a similar requirement of a thousand square feet or less. So all of them were maxing out the size of an ADU by default. And it's apparent that the legislatures, you know, when they wrote, rewrote this, you know, wanted to remove that as being, you know, a standard restriction.
Okay. Okay. Good.
There are definitely things to review and read over. There's also, if you look in your packet, I didn't open this page, but if you click on the link there, there's a really good, from Department of Commerce, just a kind of tutorial on ADUs. And it's, it's a really good read. So I recommend taking a look at that when you have a chance. And when we, of course, when we notify you that it'll be coming back for additional review for passage.
Okay. And this, our thought here is to align with H B thirteen thirty-seven? Or is this more informational of, you got to consider it because that's what it includes, even though our city doesn't have the population that matches it?
As I noted, this, this does apply to Snoqualmie. It's, it's, this is the one that applies to cities of under twenty-five thousand populations. So, yeah, it would with, of course, the state law would override the local ordinance if it's not changed. It would just void it. So it's better to do it, you know, neatly and systematically. So the code is, you know, in complete compliance with the state law, which we want to be anyway.
Right. I thought yeah, I'm trying to wade through this. I thought that this was for cities over twenty thousand, and we were just on
No, we the there were several, like I said, several bills did pass that were, that that threshold was twenty-five thousand people. That's correct. But this is the one that is for all the cities, all incorporated cities in Washington State.
Okay. So generally, we should comply is what the, I mean, basically, we fall into that preview.
Yes, sir.
We just got to figure it out still, well.
And, you know, it gives us a chance to, you know, review the code and make sure everything is correct. And we also are adding a definition for primary dwelling unit. If you note on page excuse me, for principal unit on page one of the, of the crosswalk. That should have been in the code anyway. Because if you're talking about accessory units, you want to talk about principal unit. And so we would do a little housekeeping as well with this to bring it all up to snuff.
Okay.
Any other questions or I'm not sure who's out there in Zoom land, but
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was, I was asking. Let me call the commissioners that are online quickly. Let me just switch back to the
Do we have three?
Who are zoomed in. So first, Commissioner Alef, any comments, questions?
Comments? This is exciting. It's cool to see this happening. I'm looking forward to pulling this out here in our community.
Okay. Good. Vice Chair Tesman?
Well, I was going to ask on the principal unit if that was a gap that one needed to be addressed. I'm assuming that's going to be an action for the council to address in the municipal code, and that will be the link between municipal code requirements for aesthetics and ultimately the standard for ADUs. Is that accurate?
Yes, we would clarify these definitions and clarify everything in the code and, you know, take it forward for final adoption by the council.
Okay, perfect. And then the only other thing, and you probably don't have it offhand, I'm just curious with, under Snoqualmie's existing code before thirteen thirty-seven, how many ADUs do we have in Snoqualmie? Just, just, just to understand the universe.
The actual count, I do not know. Ask our director here. Do you have a
I don't have a firm number, but I was going to recommend that we just refer back to our housing strategy plan.
Did that break, did that break out ADUs?
Yes. It has a discussion item about ADUs as a, as a strategy for meeting our housing needs.
A meeting then, but, but not how many we necessarily have at the moment, or how how much has been used within Snoqualmie so far?
Like a count, wanting a count within the city limits. And that's a good question. I don't know the prevalence of, you know, existing ADUs, essentially, is what you're saying.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just curious. I do recall reading a Seattle Times article just a couple of months ago. I forgot what city. If it was Edmonds or Linwood, I don't remember. I definitely have the city probably wrong, but they saw that even when, even when that city greatly loosened up the the code for governing ADUs, that it actually wasn't wildly popular there. So I'm, I'm just curious where we are now that thirteen thirty-seven is, is in effect, and it'll be interesting to see where we go, but okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to note that Commissioner Lambert has joined us. Welcome, Commissioner Lambert.
Thanks.
And our new commissioner, Crone. Did I pronounce that correct?
You did, yeah.
Yeah. Any, any comments on the ADUs?
No comment from me. Just thank you for the breakdown. It's really helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert, I don't know how much you heard of the presentation. Any comments on the ADU presentation of H R or H B thirteen thirty-seven?
I missed most of, most of it, so no, sorry.
Okay. So basically, they're going to allow up to two ADUs to a primary resident. One of them could be a garage to on a lot. The thousand square foot or less, right? And and it is a state law that applies to Snoqualmie. It's not one of those that's we're thinking about. It already applies to us now. We got to figure out how to accommodate it. So it's actually we're thinking about, it already applies to us now, and we've got to figure out how to accommodate it, so it's actually as our new Commissioner Crohn said, actually is pretty exciting. Okay, good, good breakdown, thank you.
Thank you, and as I mentioned, you know, there's plenty of time to review this, and if you want to visit that link, Commerce has done a great job just in giving a really good tutorial on ADUs, and you'll be seeing us back here again in July.
So so the the open question that we're going to refer to the housing strategy is, how many ADUs are now? Are there now?
Okay, like try and get a.
It'd be very interesting to know, and I assume all would have to be permitted, true?
Correct.
And so the follow up question is probably zero, but are there any requests for permitting at this time?
I don't believe so.
So so nobody in Snoqualmie has converted a garage to an apartment that we know that we know.
At this moment.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure there's people that have.
I know like in other jurisdictions that people aren't necessarily well aware of the regulations existed before the state law. When people come in for building permits, then they're told at that time, oh, well, you need to go through this process as well. But I'm sure we could check our archives and see what what we have. That's been, you know, processed, you know, through the formal process.
Okay, thank you, thank you, again, I really appreciate the detail, and a question for staff. There is no current legal framework that is that we need to deal with before this takes effect, it takes effect right now?
No, the legal framework, Jonathan, you want to answer that? Yeah, sure, sure.
It's like I mentioned, we had six, so you have six months after until, so once the complaint updates adopted, it's within six months of that, but the the CD committee, I believe, before I came, had requested that go on and be done. If it was passed, and it did pass, so it's really, we're getting ahead of the game in this respect, and getting taken care of.
Right, and this didn't get caught up in the HOA or any of that with SR one, SR two, it didn't get caught up in any of that stuff?
Well, there may be some minor legal questions about that, and we do want to.
Yeah, I mean, SR SR one, SR two, you know, they they have the Ridge Homeowners Association, and you know, those are more restrictive oftentimes than city regulations, so in reality, you know, you you might you might only see potential accessory dwelling units under with these new provisions outside the ROA and outside the floodplain. So it 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 may not provide a lot of additional housing for Snoqualmie.
And I did some in-depth reading at the time, actually, I'd seen article in the Seattle Times too. And it's actually been discussed on, I know it's been on King Five News quite a bit, when it was being considered. The legislators know that, you know, if you have an existing HOA that restricts that type of thing, I mean, that's that's like a legal agreement, and this it's this law is designed not to override HOA type of agreements, I mean, because that could be very problematic, so it's essentially as, you know, if the HOA doesn't speak to it in some restrictive way, then you know, then the green light's there for it.
Yeah, nonetheless, we still have to make the changes in our code to stay compliant.
No, I understand, I understand, but.
For the other areas that don't have HOAs.
I think from what level the excitement is, kind of depends on the HOA, but I think we're going to deal with that in a separate deal, and the other thing would be, if a resident wants to put an ADU in under these new provisions. How soon could it be, it's at this point, it sounds like it's twenty twenty four at the very earliest, if we hustle to get all this code written, is it sunburnt, right? It's not immediate.
It would be twenty twenty five, yeah, I mean, in in some cases, unless we get our act together before the six month turnaround time after our comp plans adopted in December of twenty twenty four.
Oh, okay, I thought we were.
But that, yeah, but that's for the comp plan, of course, but we are going on doing it now, so it would be, what, within six months, wouldn't it?
Yeah, we just, as long as we can get it through the, you know, planning commission and CD committee and city council and you know, commerce, so yeah, there's.
Yeah. Anyway, this is probably one of the most exciting things I've heard, that have come through the planning commission a long time, so.
We'll stay tuned for more fun.
Yeah, there's definitely some things for me down the pipe that should be some interesting lifts for the commission, so.
I made chair. Please. There's one other thing that someone could do that is in the floodplain floodway, I can't remember which one's which, but if they built sort of a carriage house, ADU where they have a garage on the bottom floor and then housing up above, I think that that's allowed. Right? Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, there is, there are some other provisions of a flood improvement permit and some threshold dollar threshold for improvement, things like that, so yeah.
They can also factor in, yeah, yeah, definitely the issue with the HOA, that also applies to the middle housing bill, HB eleven ten. Doesn't appear to apply to Snoqualmie Ridge, because HOAs are exempted. At least if they already had the rule on the books, future HOAs cannot add that to the books, though. Yeah, I think that's true of this one, right?
Right, and that was a discussion in in the legislature, when when the when this was being considered, that it said what seemed unfair, that you know, these areas that had HOAs with those specific restrictions in them, I mean, you know, you just can't unwind that type of thing, because it's it's very complex legal issues, so it's just much, it was a clean bill just to go saying, well, from at this point on. You know, you can't put that in the HOA, you know, agreement, and you can't, you know, and then other areas without choice can have, can do this. Because I think they had cited a couple like Yarrow Point and a couple of other you know, the primarily residential cities that have a lot of HOAs that restrict ADUs.
Okay, again, thank you for the the summary.
Sure, thank you.
That was, that was eye opening, actually, okay. Next on the agenda is items of planning commissioner interest, so go ahead and poll the planning commissioners, if there's an item wish to bring to attention for future discussion, now's a good time to do so, so Vice Chair Tisman?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Alef?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lambert?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Crone?
No items for me, thank you.
Okay, just one, just because I happen to walk by it occasionally, the kitty zone that is in the old IGA. When is that going to be open, do we know? Looks like they're getting close.
I do not know, I can look into it and report back to you, though.
Okay, and. Yeah, and the second question, I know that North Bend at, I think it's near the outlets, is either talking on or recently got approved to get a hotel there, I was curious, how is the vacancy on our hotel, do we have any, any feel for that?
Just in general terms, yes, in general terms, we do not have a very high
Usage.
Vacancy rate, that hotel, the the former Hampton Inn, now American. Yeah, Snoqualmie Inn, yeah, is very busy, very, very, very busy, yeah.
Oh, that's very good.
Yeah, so yeah, they're they're, I don't know what their vacancy rate is, but it's not very big.
Oh, that's good, that's good, yeah, good, wonder if that recovered, yes.
If you're done with that topic, I just had a couple of other things.
Sure.
Okay, I remembered a couple other pieces of good news, the city council also approved the city to do some work for or on Stone Quarry Road, which is the street that goes by the Northwest Railway Museum. That has been an area of issue related to the road for some time, for those of you who have been on it, so we're really eager to to see what that looks like once that work is all done, and also a very small thing, but anyone else who drives up the parkway every day going home from the freeway has to swerve around this manhole cover that for some reason was built something like four inches too low. That has been raised up to street level finally, so there's no longer that artificial pothole in the middle of the road that everyone swerves around.
Good.
You're driving a straight line.
Good, thank you, thank you, customer Johnson. Okay. So let's move on to the next agenda item, the future agenda list.
Chair Maruziak, this this Emily Artici, the Community Development Director, this is something that should look familiar to most of the planning commissioners, although we have not had it as a regular agenda item, but I'd like to get the county, the commissioners familiar with this document, it is a preview of what is coming down the pipe in time, and so although this is a bit of a work in progress, you can see that we've made some attempts to to foreshadow what kinds of code amendments, training comp plan work is coming down for the the summer and the preceding months after that. This is just meant as a useful tool for the commissioners to to refer back to, hopefully you can cross-reference it when you know, you know, if you're considering, you know, not being able to attend a meeting, you'd know what kind of important topics are coming down the pipe.
Good, good, and so we're, we, good discussion on the ADUs today. So on the twentieth, we've got an introduction of land use, and I'm just planning to seed that if we have the quorum, we do want to host the July third planning commission, so don't need to answer now, but between now and the twentieth, see if that works, because we would like to have that meeting if at all possible, and if not it, you know, if attendance doesn't work, it doesn't work, but we just want to put that out there, if you're in town, we would like to do that. This is a hybrid meeting. And then we're going to have a public hearing on our implementation of accessory dwelling units on August seventh, and that'll get here quicker than we think. Okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, appreciate that schedule, gives an idea what's coming up. Anything else on the future agenda?
No.
Okay, work program? Was that already covered in there?
Oh, I'm just gonna bring it up. Yeah, so, again, Chair Maruziak and Lee Artici, Community Development Director, this is also a document that that should be familiar to the planning commissioners. This is something that the commission worked on at the beginning of the year, and it's just meant to be as a reminder, kind of a static agenda packet item, so the commissioners can kind of see what, you know, what what we signed up to to do in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, and this, you know, it's not locked in stone, I mean, this could be a bit of, you know, an update, and it's not unforeseeable that, you know, additional items will come on on board and that we'll need to add that to the work program, but for now, this is what we have, and you know, we can make adjustments as time goes on.
Good. Thank you, Community Development Director Artici, I appreciate it. Yeah, good, good things coming, well, again, welcome to Commissioner Crone, I wondered if you wanted to just introduce yourself to the folks that are on the line, tell a little bit about yourself and what you're doing?
I'd be happy to, yeah, thank you, so my name is Mike Crone, and I have lived in Snoqualmie for about twelve years. We moved into a place I was just describing before the meeting, up near Cascade View Elementary School, and my kids have been in the school system since, you know, we went to pre K and kindergarten out here, and now they're they're both about to be at the high school, so we're my wife and I are delighted to be a part of this community, and that's part of the reason why I'm here actually, is to be able to, you know. We've we've just had a great time in the city and watched it grow, I'm a transplant from Iowa, and Snoqualmie was one of the first cities that we drove through, and we've been sort of fell in love, and so when we were able to buy a home here, we were a bit overjoyed. A bit more about me, I've worked at Phillips Healthcare in Bothell for almost sixteen years, coming up on sixteen years, in lots of different roles, mostly R and D and some design. I hold a master's in electrical engineering from University of Washington, and that's about it, that's that's kind of me.
Welcome, thank you, thanks. Appreciate, appreciate covering out some time. Yeah, definitely some interesting things coming up, the balance of this year going on to next year with a comprehensive plan, as well as the normal business. Okay, any other discussion items? Hearing none, I move that we adjourn the planning commission, can I get a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the June fifth, planning commission is adjourned at eight fifteen PM, thanks, everybody.
Have a good night, all.
Thank you.